Now it is.
Okay, well set?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to, in the meeting to order, going to call of order, we have approval agenda first, public comment on non-agenda items, approval of minutes, zoning, and the items to discuss will be zoning ordinance amendments, including the Gateway District, discussion of proposed uses and design standards, and the planning report. And we have two extra items that the planner would like to add to the agenda, both regarding seasonal cottages on Route One. One is that we need to discuss having, holding a public hearing. And the second thing would be some birth moving, you're looking for some type of, would it be a motion from us to approve it or allow it? So those are two items that we'd like to add to the agenda. Do we need to have a motion on that?
We need to do a roll call first.
Okay, roll call?
Right here.
James Lauer?
John Dugan.
Bob Coon.
Thank you.
I'd like to take it out of order.
Yeah.
Those things concerning seasonal cottages.
Okay.
That would be brought to the front. The reason I'm saying that is, that's an existing project going on. Instead of getting lagged and dragged along the way, let's find out what's going on and let's expedite.
Would that talk the agenda for half the minutes?
Yeah, half the minutes. But anyway.
All right, the motion? Second? Well, second discussion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, where's my?
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, so.
I didn't grab.
You did start.
Yes. I gave that show.
Really?
Yeah.
You crushed the little handle. If you do that, yeah.
It's okay.
I'm glad it was set.
I'm glad we checked.
Good.
I'm glad you checked.
Yeah. Just to play. All right, and are there any, from those of you in the public, any other, any comments you'd like to discuss? Okay, feel free, if there is an issue, reach your hand, go on. Okay, so now approval of minutes?
I'd like to move that we open the minutes for discussion. I have a couple of items that I'd like to clarify. Clarification on one sentence trivia.
Okay. Everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, page one, item one, under Gateway District. Second line starts with an S. It's either a was or an is. So that should be changed. So that's a nice trivia. We move down to the next paragraph. I'm not sure that we have a conflict, so it's good that Donna's in the audience as Those on to say that the Gateway District designation applies to the end of the Route One quarter and is intended as a mixed-use district accommodating residential business and community uses. We've got down to the next paragraph, under uses, it says pretty much same thing. Uses as well as single and multifamily dwellings. However, under our development standards, second line, second sentence starts, residential uses both single and multifamily that are part of a mixed-use project will be permitted. It goes out and say by new single-family subdivisions will be excluded, but that's clarified now. Seems like there's a disconnect on perhaps the intent of the comprehensive plan and what the development standard is.
Well, those are both from the comprehensive plan. Development standards is a subsection of that portion of the, on the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so, so I guess is the intent, the intent then is to allow the single and multifamily dwellings, but only in a mixed use. I mean, only in the, yeah.
No. Now, the intent was, and I will agree with you that this is perhaps inadequately worded, but the intent was that you could have a single or mixed family dwelling that you just as an owner had, had no association with a business, because we did that in all the mixed-use districts. But that we would also allow a single or multifamily dwelling associated with a business. So you can have a single family dwelling standing on its own on a lot, or it could be above a shoe store. So it's an either/or, not one excludes the other.
The only exclusion is a subdivision.
Right.
So under the development, I mean, this was minutes, and that is how it's written. So the minutes are correct, right? It's all about, we need to, when we cover the actual area, when we get into the district, then we'll have to get clarification back to you, right?
Well, I read directly from the complaint.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. And what you read is what Donna is saying was written, but that's a conflict. It, that's not what the real intent of the words, well, there appeared to be a conflict here, that's why I brought it up.
I don't think it's necessarily a conflict. I will agree that it could be worded better or more clearly, but it's not a conflict because in under uses, says community uses as well as single and multifamily dwellings, and then later on in development standards, residential uses both single and multifamily that are part of a mixed-use project will be permitted. So what we're doing is sort of adding that to it. So in the one section it says you can have single and multifamily dwellings, and in the next session, section, it says that those multi, single and multifamily dwellings associated with a business will also be permitted.
Well, and that's what's missing, the also.
That would help.
Because that excludes, that really excludes the single and family standing alone. It provides a provision for single and family, but only as part of a mixed-use project. So residential uses both single and family and multifamily that are part of a mixed-use project will also be permitted. And that takes care of both your uses and your development standards. So.
Yeah, your, good points to bring up, but this, the minutes aren't correct, so.
Yeah.
Well, he may amend it.
Well.
Yeah. We can't amend it because that's from the.
That's clarification.
Clarification, but, but that's.
We all know what we gotta do.
Yeah, but it.
As the minutes go, that's what was presented.
Yeah, that is what was presented, the minutes are, are correct, we just, we just have to further discussion.
Okay, question that, can we add to amendment to that clarification?
Revisit that later.
Under the minutes?
No, no, because this is the minutes of the last meeting.
Right.
Okay, we can, we, we can address it when we get into the district in a few minutes.
But it will be. The minutes, Marty, are the record of what people said. I could say that we live in the state of Wyoming, and I'd be wrong, but minutes would be accurate if it reflected that I said that.
If we could move on to page two, fourth paragraph or fourth sentence down, says the BI district, which will be behind and beyond the Gateway District, provides for larger businesses, and will also have a provision residential, as it currently does not. Have we done the BI yet?
Yeah, we have, actually.
The BI says no residential.
Yep. She's just defining where the BI is in this.
Yeah.
And that's what we're defining, and it is larger, not larger businesses, although I think rural ones would be allowed.
Well, yeah, rural is down there.
But rather than beyond, behind and beyond, you might say south of, and that'll take care of its location.
That's not the issue.
Yeah, that's.
Revision for residential is the issue.
I don't, you recall that being brought up last week?
No.
It wasn't.
Well, you must have got it off of a reporter, and that would have been a statement by you, right, Ken? So I'm just trying to get to the intent, the way that it is, doesn't make sense to me unless you fell into the conflict of the other ones.
What issue is, is the problem? The BI district's definition of where it is?
No.
Whether it allows residents?
Well, yeah, we state that we will also have a provision for residential, as it currently does not in the BI district.
That's right.
The board has done, the board hasn't looked at that. How do we know that it's gonna happen?
The what? You've already, you've already gone through the BI district already. And the BI district, yeah, we have, we haven't finalized it, but we've already done that. The BI district right now does not permit residential subdivision.
Realizes that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, I know it doesn't, right now.
It's a question.
This says it will.
Hasn't permissioned.
And I'm just, could have a provision as determined by the board, I mean, something like that, but this is, it's going to, and these guys don't have to.
Well, I think the next line says that the comprehensive plan states that although residences are permitted, subdivisions are not. So resident, so it's right now, the comprehensive, the BI district is in conflict with the comprehensive plan. We knew of it as the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Okay. That's what it's basically saying.
Okay.
It is not saying that, that's what it should say.
Well, what it should say is everything else, but we haven't said it could be, or is the comprehensive plan writing the rules and regulations for us to follow? I mean, let's put it this way, it said BI was no residential, that's what it said. Now you're saying it's gonna be permitted, when we haven't discussed it.
Well, that's what the complaint approved, and that's what was approved by the voters in June, so.
It didn't say that residential would be in the existing district.
I'm not sure.
The comprehensive plan committee hasn't discussed the existing district at all.
Yeah, so.
BI district at all. I don't think we have. Good point, what you're asking.
And we have not discussed the BI district at all, and we have made no changes to its existing language. So the statement in the minutes is incorrect based on the comprehensive plan.
Yep, this.
Or if I put the character before the horse.
And I, as far as I know, that's not even on our agenda to discuss.
Right, so that single line, it says, the comprehensive plan states that although residences are permitted, subdivisions would not be permitted. That's nothing you discussed?
No, that statement applies to the mixed-use district, so maybe there's some confusion between DB1 and BI.
Yeah.
But we did not.
And the Gateway District.
Right.
We did not discuss the BI district at all.
Yeah, I think maybe perhaps, Mr. Chairman, we need to strike the last, the last line of the BI district, which will be behind, and I would, I would say would be south of the GWD district, provides for larger business.
Period.
Period. Okay.
That would have been true.
So.
Okay. Okay. One more.
You got one for yours?
Yeah, I, I, okay, I just want to understand that the amendments are worth. Page three, first paragraph, says the planner commented that a framework could be developed. And this is where I get confused, so Ted, you can help. And each district, once completed, and each district could be replaced one at a time. I just couldn't follow.
Okay. The second needs district.
I'm sorry?
Go away. Yeah, I think the second phrase, and each district would go away.
Yeah, each district, once completed. Oh, so just take out Andy's district? See, I, I did that. Each district, yeah, lady.
And once completed, each district could be replaced.
Makes sense.
Right.
I couldn't get there, I did recognize it myself. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any, any other? Okay, I don't, I don't need to, seem petty here, but, but I recall bringing up, although you may have already had that idea, I brought up the idea talking with Todd, before we discussed having that replacement, I suggested having this, this, the format be different. So just, I didn't do that, by the way.
You didn't?
No. Okay. Mr. Chair. I'll stand behind you on that, Mr. Chair, because you gave me the idea, you said, like, what would it take to put that, the new ordinance, the old ordinance into the new framework?
Yeah, just work on the format rather than.
Correct, if you want me to go back, I can amend that.
Okay, so maybe just.
How would you want to put that in, Mr. Chairman?
Way it was just stated.
Instead of the, instead of the planner, instead of.
No.
Long again. That would be. That way I can show my wife.
I'm still in the credit gap. No, I'm deleting my.
Believe where you are.
What's that? Is that your party that answered agreement right there, Ted? But what do you, I didn't like these minutes. This is your idea, not mine, the secretary.
Okay.
Any, any other items to?
No, the next motion will be, the minute says.
As adjusted.
Okay, I'll like that, sir. The special, all in favor? Okay, all in unanimous. Okay. So, let's move on to, we'll do the seasonal cottages, it might be proposed, we'll jump right into that. So we need to schedule a public hearing.
Fill us in. Call what, and where, and everything else, yeah.
Well, we need to have a public hearing, we need to have another public hearing on the amendments to section eight, seventeen.
Where is it?
Which is the change in the length of stay time at all seasonal resorts. You remember, we went through that at May twenty-second meeting. However, because there was a definition that was buried in our definitions that included a six-month window, instead of the eight-month window, and we didn't pick up on that, we could not proceed with taking that to town meeting. And so I went through the whole ordinance to find every single definition for, where six months is limited for all seasonal cottages and seasonal cottage resorts. And leave those changes, and it reflects a couple other sections and a couple definitions.
Right.
And so we need to take that to public hearing and get that done before the selection take to, uh, board, but it may.
But those questions that we had, was the reason those questions were being done also on the way, to make sure there would be no schoolchildren in, in the school system. And that was resolved at our public hearing before town meeting. Sorry.
But we had to make some more changes to the definition section of the ordinance, which means we have to have another public hearing on those changes.
Who made all these changes?
You guys asked me to make those changes. I did.
And that was all done before town meeting? Or is this now afterwards?
It was, May twenty-second was our last chance to make town meeting. You asked me to make those changes at the May twenty-second, there wasn't enough time to have another public hearing. So that's why I didn't go to town. Couldn't go to town meeting, and there wasn't enough time to have another public hearing. There wasn't a notification. So the selectmen are gonna take this to a special town meeting, and therefore to make sure that there are all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, we're gonna have a public hearing to make sure that, that we meet all of the statutory requirements. Okay?
When is that special town meeting proposed?
That's gonna be up to the selectmen, but it'll be after we finish our town hours. And ours requires a two-week notification of all we are.
Beyond the November ballot?
No, not beyond the November ballot. Two reasons I don't believe the selectmen has, has. The, the, the town manager could better address this.
Well, that's all I'm waiting on, Ted.
You know, he's got his hand up.
Yeah, he's.
He's actually.
So it's your turn.
All right, first, Ted, the revision that you sent me to present to the town, the board of selectmen requires a revision. No, that was never, that never.
So the one you sent me was the one that went to town meeting?
No, the one I sent you was that, what the planner was telling me to do after.
Okay, because there was another reference to six months as opposed to eight months in there.
Right.
I've discussed it with board of selectmen, I will give you an update on the discussion we had about the changing format, I will know by Monday what that will cost us from, if Southern Maine Planning and Development Council does it. If they can turn it around quickly enough, the selectmen would like to have a special town meeting that would coordinate the question of changing seasonal cottages, as well as the question of changing format. To get that out of the way at a special town meeting, so that when we go to town meeting with the actual ordinance changes, we don't have to confuse that issue by asking them to vote on the format first and then proceed. So we're hopeful that it will be, it will be right around the November elections, it will more likely be after the November election, but the cost, the timing and the cost of programming ballots was going to be prohibitive, and in a situation like that, I, my comfort level is greater if it's an open town meeting, we have discussions on these things. So that's where that's at. You were mentioning, Marty, about the seasonal nature of this, the cottages. It is my understanding, in speaking with the attorney yesterday, that the state of Maine is going to condition that TIF upon that remaining seasonal, albeit whatever definition we have of seasonal, but to have a distinct stipulation in that TIF that if it becomes a year-round residential project, that TIF goes away. They are, they no longer qualify for the concessions that they're getting if they come and request to be a year-round resort.
Mr. Chair? If I may ask the manager a question? All right, so if we're gonna have another public hearing, just for the seasonal cottages, we should also have a public hearing on the framework?
That's correct. And I would, in conjunction, just depending on how quickly we can see that, old ordinance in the new format.
Okay.
And so that's going to, that's going to dictate the timing of that public hearing, and everybody will be notified well and advanced, but that's what's going to.
Did that? Through the chair?
Yeah.
By our great population of attendance.
Yeah.
At town meetings. Would we not get a better response, per se, by voting? Because more people come out to vote. Turn out, you'll be lucky if you have fifteen, twenty people at the whole town meeting.
That, that may in fact be the case, Marty, but the selectmen's meeting, when we were able to discuss it, was actually past the forty-five day deadline for the board of selectmen to call an article on the referendum vote. So there will be more people turning out, but it won't be on the ballot this year in November.
But how long have we known about this?
Well, it just came back to the selectmen's attention at the last meeting on Monday night. We had no.
By whom?
For a while.
Yeah, but by whom?
By whom what?
It brought to their attention?
I did. Because the developer asked us a question of, the week before that, when is this going to start moving? So I brought it forth to the selectmen, the selectmen felt the same way, that it would be better off discussed at an open town meeting, even though we're not going to get two thousand people there, at least the people can have the conversation, rather than two thousand people going in and not necessarily knowing what it is we're asking, not being able to explain what it is we're asking, and voting no.
All right.
Yeah, I, this may be off a little bit, but we're moving them from halftime to three-quarter time. Are we getting an adjustment in what the tax is gonna be on all of that? I mean, that could be huge.
We'll get our tax dollars faster, and if, 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 he has proposed that it could bring him a twenty-five percent increase in the value of those units that he's selling, that twenty-five percent increase will be realized by the town and by developers. So we will get out of proportion.
That could be huge towards the.
Yeah.
The two months, you mean?
Additional two months, yes.
So you have Christmas here.
They, yeah, they could, it would be April to December.
No, it's April to December thirty-first.
Yes.
So you made it through. Actually, May first and December.
Yeah, not two, through.
Right. That's an empty out by. More goes off, you do your mistake.
Words.
The objective was that the developer found in his marketing that he could increase his absorption rate and his market potential and value of the units if they could go through the foliage season, which is bae and prelude.
So no New Year's parties?
No New Year's. No, we've got a New Year's party, but it goes off and in that.
No, the reason I'm asking that is, no, the reason, no, the reason I'm asking that is because they're gonna have convention center, are they gonna turn out and have a center there for all the.
Functions.
Functions. And is this gonna turn out, that's why I'm asking it, is, is it gonna be stretched from here to now, okay, for all of them to turn around for New Year's and, and everything else? That's why I'm asking the question, I mean, because are we gonna keep stretching this out and out and out?
That's, that's an excellent point, I thought of that too. That's where I think it's important to have a public hearing, so everybody knows what's going on. This is a big change.
Right now, it's proposed to be May one to December thirty-first. No. Right now, the ordinance is May to October.
Right, but in our last discussion, it was.
It was May to December thirty-first. Okay, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing, once convenient members of the board put that there, there's.
Okay, have a second of that, then we can discuss the date. Can you second that? Wait, so what about, yeah, so all, all in favor of the discussion? All, um, cameras?
Stay for.
So now we have to come up with a date. Would be one of our.
One of our regular schedules.
I'd imagine so. The question is, do you want to save until we find out whether we're gonna do the framework too?
By the next planning board meeting, Mr. Chair, I should have an idea of when that framework will be ready for us, if it's, if that ready at that point, and then it might be why some of our.
Why would be? Are the, the developers in a rush to?
No, they're, no, they're not right now, because we're running up against the end of the season. The state still hasn't fully approved the TIF, so they can't move forward really until that TIF has been finalized.
And we won't be holding up.
We're not holding them up at all.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one thing they are concerned about is they do have to get the promotional material out.
Right, absolutely.
That does, that will, whether they're selling this as six-month or eight-month is an issue for the promotional.
But we're also pushing the idea too, okay, the season, if they're gonna get in there and do anything, it ain't too long before frost starts to come. I mean, and if they, if they wanna turn on a plate, play in the frozen ground, that's fine, but at this time.
They're playing let, so I don't think that's gonna be much of a problem under the weather. Actually, it'll help stabilize soil rush if it's all frozen. But they're gonna be blasted, Marty, that's their.
But we want to, we have to have this approved at the November, right?
No.
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 None of these are going to the referendum.
Not going to the referendum.
And Joe understands that, he's completely accepting of that. They will, they'll both be in a special town meeting, and if it's going to be a very long delay, if SM PDC tells me it's going to be six weeks before they can get that back to us, we will hold two separate special town meetings to make sure that that question's gonna happen.
So we'll find out more next.
Yes, next meeting.
Okay, so wait to skip with that. So from a timeline standpoint, we, two weeks of those.
Yes.
For a public hearing, and then how much for the referendum?
Seven days.
After the public hearing?
No, that, those times can all be run concurrently. So we could announce the public hearing fourteen days ahead of time, and at the same time, we can announce that there'll be a special town meeting, we only need, we only need seven days.
So you could have a public, public meeting on day fourteen, and, no, excuse me, a public hearing on day fourteen, and then a public meeting and vote on day fifteen?
You can actually, what we did with the TIF vote is you can do both together. We get the public hearing on the TIF and the vote in the same meeting.
All right.
Okay, so the motion is that at the earliest town meeting, I'd like to adjust that motion as determined by the town manager in coordination with the town.
Great, good. Second, third?
I had a question.
Okay, yep. We're in for a, yeah, all we did vote.
No, through, through this. Being confused or whatever else, the fact is, okay, we had town meeting, everybody went through all the hoops and everything else to be approved. Then we came back and found out that we had to redo it over again. Now, is this the third try that we're doing again, or we'll?
No, this, now we're finally at the state level, the TIF, we're done talking about the actual TIF itself. What we're talking about now is amending our ordinances to change to eight months. So the TIF doesn't reference how many months it is, it's our ordinance that restricts that. So this is a completely separate issue dealing with the same subject.
The TIF is already approved and moving forward. This is just, we're changing the ordinance, so we have to, the public hearing, can that change to the eight months? Does that make sense?
It does, but it doesn't because I thought it was already done. When we had questions at the public hearing about schooling and everything else.
Yes, and Marty, that document that we voted on doesn't refer to the length of time that they can be there. It just states that per our ordinances, they're seasonal in nature. And so in order to, right now, seasonal in nature in our ordinances means six months. So if we change our ordinances to eight months, the TIF document won't change because it's still seasonal in nature.
Okay, now, are there seasonal, it is intended?
Okay, so we'll figure out next time. We also have what they wanted for, for the earth movement, do you explain that? Yeah, the planning board has discussed this before. When you went into this project, there would be excess material from the developing the site. Then when they were looking at burying the, especially burying water lines much deeper to build more frost for the future, there's even more excess material. They can't use all that material on the site for construction purposes. So they need to get it off-site. Basically, the blasters, whoever's doing the actual excavation, wants to be able to move that stuff off-site. But they want to make sure that that is, that is allowable under the town ordinances and under the approval of this, this board. Now, you've already discussed this before with, with Joe Palalini when we were doing, going through subdivision and the conditional use for this very project, because I believe that question was asked, what are we gonna do with all this material? Well, let's get rid of it off, that which we cannot get rid of off-on-site, we will have to export off-site. The board didn't have a problem with it. However, at the, and I've gone through all those minutes to try to find, you know, where, where that was actually recorded. We never really did record that statement. It was a discussion, but we never took action on it.
Well, on some of that, we did say, because we also said, turn out, that they could donate it to, to where, on Route One where the building would be for the town, town hall. Because we did mention it, and Joe said yes on that, because we're requiring so much fill to be brought in or wherever else that. And we, I, because I'm the one who threw it out to him like that. Irrespective, they're requesting something from this board.
They're requesting an ex. Essentially acknowledging that they're gonna have excess material to move off-site. I assume they're concerned that somebody from the town would characterize it as a.
Mining.
Boring operation?
Correct.
Mining, and mining has not.
What they wanna do is make sure that the, that the planning board is in fact cognizant of the fact that there is going to be excess material and that is within the terms of the air parole, of the air parole, that they can take that excess material off-site. So the trucking firm wants to know, can I take this extra blast material off-site?
Apparently, does our ordinance require a permit to take material off-site?
Yeah.
We have a limitation on how much material can be removed.
That is.
We have a limitation on material based on whether you get a permit for taking material off-site. But this is associated with an approved construction project. It's not a separate project.
That would be where you just take in the rock and need a permit. I checked with the partner construct, and I don't think you need.
But, but. Where would that be in our order?
But the question is also, we have never approved. We've gone dance around it for many times. It's classified as mining.
No, this is. Material that's associated with the construction. It's no different than when, it's no different if you have excess material that you're taking off during road building, and you're taking it out because there's no place else to balance your cut of fill, you've got excess cut. So you're gonna take, truck it off-site, get rid of it. State of Maine does it all the time when you do a reconstruction project. They have to get rid of all that material that they're doing in a, in a full-depth reconstruction of a road.
Yeah, but they do that anyway, because guess what? Nobody's there to stop them.
But, yeah. I believe it's section eight point six point one or section eight point six point two that references removal of material incidental to a construction project. I believe that's the section that the board just needs to reference to make this employee feel more comfortable.
It might be five.
Eight five?
But based on the table of content.
It's on the table.
Yeah. Yeah, eight point five point B, the following earth moving activity shall be allowed without a conditional use permit. The removal of filling of material incidental to alteration or repair of a structure or degrading and landscaping incidental to such construction alteration or repair. Yeah. And eight point five point B point three does have mentioned less than hundred cubic yards, but I think that is.
And that's without a permit.
Right. Yeah, that's without, that's without construction.
Right, that'll be associated with a construction project.
So, well, if they're looking for a statement. I think he's. We're just, just, if anybody's willing to make a motion that, that they will be complying to eat a motion or just a general statement.
It's a fine line.
They would like some sort of mo, they would like some acknowledgement from the planning board that this is in fact permitted underneath our ordinance and in terms of their. That's why they're not getting it from the cover office, or they want it from the planning board. Okay, so we, we do have eight point five point B and B one.
Even.
Yeah.
So you can simply ask if it's consensus of the board that this is permitted.
Question, through the chair.
Yes.
To the town manager. Okay. How much fill is needed at Route One? Because Joe did mention, if he had access, some of it would, he would be willing to go there.
I could, I don't know all that.
I'm just, I'm throwing that as a point because it was brought up. Instead of, because one of the reasons that was washed away, because it would cost so much. But if you got half of it there for nothing, that cuts, that cuts the construction cost down to, but as long as we don't have another cold.
Right. I can talk to Joe about that.
I'm just, for point of clarification.
Okay.
So we might get back up to Route One.
So let's, let's just go with consensus, I like that, Joe. I'd like to have a vote to, just to see where we're all standing. So we're looking for a vote on, on that, whether we agree that they are complying with the current standards of eight point five point B, eight point five point B one. So all in favor of? Yeah, any opposed, not opposed, so it's unanimous?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. Now, by the weight and everything else, okay? The fact is, for the load on the roads, okay, is, is that gonna affect Route One? Because of heavy weight loads.
If you're transporting.
And the state's looking at now.
Well, the, well, the state has, the state really controls Route One. The state has limits on what trucks can have weight-wise to pass over Route One. So I mean, in my.
They don't?
Not on Route One, they don't.
You can't get a ticket going down Route One, being overloaded?
Oh, under DOT standards, yes, okay. I mean.
Hundred thousand, right, Marty?
Yeah.
And they, they also have pretty.
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
The material being used and everything.
It's a different kind of truck, and you carry different loads, right? That's right.
Yeah, oh, definitely. What are they running the trucks? Convales?
Well, we don't know.
And we don't know, and, I mean, and my point is, they've got to override by the state regulations on that. It's really not the purview of the board to say you can only run.
I'm just throwing out, I mean, I'm trying to think, because it's, because Route One right now, even though it was done so many years ago, it's disintegrating all over again. Well. I'm just throwing it as, as a fact.
Okay, I think, I think we're all set on that, I.
One last statement is that, yes, Route One does belong to the state of Maine. State of Maine has the rules and regulations on Route One. When they were having issues finding a construction entrance, the developer came to me and asked if he could get permission to use the mountain road. And I expressly told him no, because that road has not been built to that standard A, or he would have to post bond on the entirety of the mountain road and do video and radar surveys to make sure there was nothing used. So he was, he was very understanding that, no, we're not putting him on the mountain road, he's going over one.
So, I mean, I'm just.
And it's the DOT limits on the vehicles themselves, like, you know, Bentley Warren and his dump trailers, they can have as lively vehicle as they want, as long as that vehicle meets DOT standards.
I'm just trying to.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to the Gateway District zoning ordinance. Proposed uses and design standards. So, how do we plan to?
Well, well, it's kind of interesting that we're talking about this, because as you recall, we were going to start doing this last time, and we didn't, for some reason, we got hung up on a few other items. However, you also, the board also was very adamant to follow the example that had been suggested by the complaint committee, that we solicit information from the existing business owners and residences, residents in the Gateway District. And so you had set a public workshop date for October ninth. That notice to all property owners, both who are within the Gateway District and those who are but the Gateway District or in proximity to the proposed Gateway District, have already been notified. Those notices went out yesterday, with a map and the notification and contact information. And so that information has been disseminated, we are on schedule for the ninth. I would suppose that the issue would be whether we want to go over some of these issues now in preparation for that meeting, or we want to go over some of the formatting that we want to do in order to solicit the information from the participants in that public hearing. So, public workshop, right here. Unfortunately, the chairman wasn't here, but he thought it would be a good opportunity for the board to go over some of the existing uses that we're talking about now, and some of the, also the, the boundaries of the district, if there are any changes that we should do or consider doing before we have that public hearing. What you have in front of you is actually not much different than it was about a year ago. It's like, we did make some updates on it, based on some information that we had gotten, some of our experiences we had doing the townhouse quarter district. And this is the list that we're gonna be presenting to, or having as a, I should say, as a base for participants at the meeting to consider. We know that if we ask people what they want in the district, usually they, they don't really know. We have to, it's more of a reactive process where you offer them something, and then they will tell you yes or no. So this is sort of our reactive list. And the board should look at it and determine whether this is suitable, whether things are unsuitable in it, and whether we need additions or additions, just to begin the discussion of our participants in tuition.
I agree, you're going to go through this list here.
So you. You'll notice that they're not, and this is the same list I think I mailed to you a month ago. It's just that it was same list, same list. That's why it has the date of August, that Marty pegged out August fourteenth there. So basically, it's, it's, it starts off the same premise that we've been using all along, that existing businesses and associated structures operating there adds the date of its promulgation would in fact be permitted uses. Could you remind me where that date came from? That date is town meeting, this is.
Is it the day or the day after the town meeting, that's the day?
That's the day of the town meeting.
Unless the vote.
We could change that date, or amend that date accordingly, or the week after, usually we put it in.
Yeah, once we become in the thing, we have to fill in.
Right, so I just put in that date, so you know that. That's, that's when town meeting is going to be this time.
Okay. Under item two.
Yep.
We've got single-family residents, detached, and duplexes.
Yep.
And we said in two other places that we're going to allow multi-family, what is, what is, what is the intent of detached?
Well, detached is single-family house, detached. That's what a single-family detached is.
Okay, cool.
It's your house, your house.
So single-family, right, we don't need detached, right?
No, single-family residents, detached, there's three classifications you have in your definitions. Detached single-family, duplex, which is two single families joined by a common wall, and the third is multifamily, which is more than, more than two units, excluding an accessory apartment.
What is condo?
Condo is a form of ownership.
Yeah, but.
It's a form of ownership, and usually, usually it's a multifamily.
Right.
Condo walls, it's usually multifamily, although we have more and more condos that are freestanding.
And several that would be, if it was a two-unit condo, it would be, I would say it would fall under duplex.
Yeah, that's, we've got a flag that it is.
So we've got multifamily in conditional usage box?
Yeah, I, I know, I just do it on there. We've got, again, I'm slow. We've got a single-family residence condo. Now, we're going out to something new. And the something new is detached and duplexes.
What's a detached single-family residence?
One that's not attached to another single-family residence.
Which we're making.
No, it's. Right.
Yeah, so you don't need detached if you have duplexes there, or Bob's or.
Just to make it clear, so I don't argue, have an argument with somebody about that?
Well, see, well, we, and my, and my other point, John, is that we just said for the comprehensive plan, we're going to allow multi-family.
Right, and it's down in conditional uses.
Yeah, I know, but he, but he had just.
No, you said, this is in our definitions, is it the ones we've been coming up with?
It's the same definitions.
So you have single.
Yeah, if you look at your definition, you all have your, your, you have your current ordinance, you have your proposed format, and I've given you the new framework one, the one that's most, most current. And if you look at the residents. At residential. Well, it's, it should be in there.
Well, I'm glad we don't have this conversation a lot.
Well, I agree, but yeah, a duplex is a multifamily.
You could, you could solve that by saying, single-family residents, both detached and duplex. That makes it clear.
No, this is.
No?
A duplex is two single-family units together.
Right, but single-family resident, well, that then says then, both detached and duplex.
Well, that question. Next, next. Single-family, or you can have duplex, or you can have multifamily. Down, and if a question is asked, it's down below. The next question is, the size of the gateway section, where, is there enough land to support? No, I mean, because if you have a duplex, you have to have one and a half times the original amount in that, and what is the zone, what is the acreage minimum requirement? And then in the zoning for gateway, is it R one, R two, R three, what is it?
On the next page. Four acre.
Now, there are.
I'm pulling my.
Marty, I have this.
I can't find the single family.
No, I can't either.
In the definition, it's not.
That's what is in there.
But you have several different dwellings.
Yeah, you have dwellings.
Other residential. Not number residential, either.
No, dwelling units.
Dwelling?
Yep. It's dwelling units.
So, okay.
Single-family, two-family, multifamily.
Right, single-family, two-family. Building containing only one dwelling unit.
Yeah, so, so I would say that number two should read, single-family dwelling and two-family dwelling.
We can do that, if we keep this same definition, we'll do that. Single-family and two-family dwellings.
That would work.
Yep.
Then the definition has more detached.
It's a two-family dwelling, that is not necessarily a duplex. You want to go that route? All right, you can tell whether it's a single-family, two-family, three or four. You can't tell, they're all living together in one undivided unit.
Well, it's basically, the two-family dwelling unit definition says a building containing only two dwelling units for occupation by no more than two families. And the multi.
So we have a.
Were you reading that text?
Under definition of dwelling.
Yep.
Okay? A single-family dwelling is a building containing only one dwelling unit for occupation by no more than one family. By two, two-family dwelling, under, and it also says duplex in parentheses, a building containing only two dwelling units for occupation by more than, no more than two families.
That's not exactly the same as what I have. It's not consistent with what's in this.
We have something different.
Yeah, it's a little, it's almost the same, but the words may seem.
All right, that's our existing ordinance.
One thing I, one thing I don't see along here, also too, under dwelling units or anything else, which was taken out of the residential zone at one time or another, I don't see anything about B and B.
Well, let's come back to that.
No, it'd be under a permitted use.
If we look under seven, on page seven of our existing ordinance, maybe we should just take that. That definition is a little better.
I think that's clear, and it's a little clearer. Existing one, yeah.
Yeah, I don't like this one.
It's almost the same, but.
It is almost the same, but I think this one's clear. So change all the dwelling, we'll take our existing one and translate it over to this one. It's a little clearer, because it also brings up the issue of duplex, which we use constantly. Elsewhere in the ordinance, we use duplex.
One thing, yeah, and it's important to include that dwelling unit in that too, because that then goes to, to your concern, John. I knew it was in there, but it ain't nowhere.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that they have their, they have to have the kitchen and all that stuff.
Well, yeah, we have that also under our definition of dwelling.
Yeah, dwelling.
Dwelling unit is, we amended that back in 2010.
There is some language in, no one's staying, where was it? Not including recreational vehicles, seasonal cottages, hotels, motels, lodging houses, and boarding houses.
Right.
I don't, we don't see that in the old ones.
It's not in the, I put it in here specifically to make sure that we didn't have that.
We don't want those.
We don't want those, because those aren't dwellings.
So, if we're going to go with the old ones, we should, maybe should pull that clause in.
You can do that.
Include it.
Yep.
Because, yeah, we want to make sure seasonal cottages and.
Hotels, motels, lodging.
They have their own definition, right.
Because it's not something we have a real problem with yet, but frankly speaking, recreational communities of which we will probably have more and more recreational facilities, there's a tendency for the desire to create winter rentals, which impacts our school system. If we could start defining them now as not a dwelling unit for permanent habitation, then we automatically start cutting off that as an option, a backdoor option that could have a physical impact on our community in the future.
So, could you just revise that?
Yeah, I can.
And, but for now, we do want to keep single-family dwellings.
Two-family and.
Go ahead, you can add or mention.
I guess I, I don't know how much you enjoy my kind of conversation like this, but I wanted to ask Ken, has a definition of, is there a definition of family in there? The reason I ask that is, you have single-family, you have duplex, which is multifamily, but what if I built a duplex for my wife and children and my parents? That's all one family, so that's a single family with two dwelling units.
Well, our definition of family is one or more persons occupying a premises and living as a single housekeeping unit.
Okay, all right.
That's a housekeeping unit.
Sometimes you run into that vague area.
Well, that's why we call it a housekeeping unit, and it can be unrelated people too.
Absolutely, because Jenny ran into the other.
Now, here's the question, also along similar lines, okay? What about all your uncles and aunts and everything else that move into the same house?
That's, that kind.
If they're, if they're functioning as a contiguous family, then they're covered under that.
But if the cops keep coming.
Don't we have that definition?
We ought to have a car.
We can amend it.
Wondering what the rationale was for putting the multifamily dwellings under conditional uses. Why not just make them permitted uses?
Be unlikely they would be multifamily, because not much.
I understood, but since they're.
Well, because all, because most multifamilies in the, in the, in the town are already considered as conditional uses because of the amount of work that has to go into it. First of all, there's subdivisions. By late, by law, by main state law, there's subdivisions. So we have to be very careful when we talk about, no subdivisions allowed. Again, in a subdivision, it's allowed, you can't, prohibited subdivision and, and encourage single, multifamily units, because multifamily unit is a subdivision by state standard. So we have to be careful about that, and that's something we're going to have to work out in this. But one of the reasons we do it is because there's such a, such a large amount of, all multifamilies in the ordinance are considered to be conditional uses everywhere they are. And in fact, the multifamily provisions are in fact in section eight, which is the conditional use section. So rather than changing everything all over, we decided to keep going with multifamily as they are in just about every district as being a conditional use. Now, conditional use is just nothing more than a permitted use with conditions. And we have a lot of conditions for multifamilies. Some of them very advantageous conditions, especially in consideration of interest restricted housing. There's some real advantages to, to multifamily that are not extended to other types of, of apartments.
Question?
I'm, can I ask, I have a question that I want to ask. In the comp plan, when we discussed subdivisions being disallowed, we specifically said subdivisions as defined by state statute. Does that eliminate that particular conflict between multifamily housing and subdivision?
No, we have conflict. State statute specific, those references, condominiums, housing apartments, buildings, anything that is a division of ownership. You can do that, also, it's subdivision, subdivision of commercial land as well, or commercial buildings. If you have a building that you buy, sections of that, that's a subdivision under subdivision.
Oh, oh, we specifically said here in the comp plan, new residential subdivision, so that takes that.
That takes that off, but, and I think the planning board understands the intent of what you're trying to do, what the complaint committee's trying to do. The complaint committee's objective was not to have sprawling sets of residential, multifamily subdivisions.
Right.
So I think the planning board's going to interpret your intent and allow certain kinds of projects like multifamily, but exclude single-family large subdivisions. Haven't figured out how we're going to do that yet.
I got an idea. Yeah. Put the term in there, English speaking.
Yeah, Todd, sorry.
Move down.
What?
State, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but state subdivision law only creates a subdivision if you're condominium, if it's going in a condo form of ownership. You can have a multifamily unit that's in single ownership, that's not a subdivision, but when you.
Correct.
Make, create a condo, then you have to identify the cost.
It is an ownership, well, it's three more, it's three more.
Three or more.
Three more units.
Is it units or lots?
It's units.
It is units.
Yeah. So every, every single thing we've ever done, yeah, everything I've ever done, I've.
Yeah, I don't know what book you're in.
But. Which is why we did, well, that was separate ownership.
Yeah, it's still under single ownership. It's only when you divide it and settle it up that it becomes condominium.
Well, it's, condominium was just, yeah, that's just an ownership, but it's the same thing as if you, if you, if we have, if we, if I have a private right, and private way talks about units in there, and they all can be owned by the same person, right? But three or more units, you're going to have to put in eighteen-inch, eighteen-foot rope. Doesn't matter about the ownership, it matters about the number of units. I believe that's the same thing with subdivision ownership, which Todd may be looking up and.
Well, I, I mean, I'm looking at division or tract of parcel land into three or more lots within a five-year period.
Right.
So, I mean, I think we're, we're getting way off topic here.
Yeah.
If I could add, Don, I mean, typically, what my, from my perspective for multifamily, why that would be appropriate in a conditional use is that typically that has a larger amount of ancillary development that goes along with it, parking, stormwater, a lot of other things that I would prefer to have as the purview of the board versus a just a large allowable use.
Well, I'd like to get back to this, that, that's a definition of, of dwellings that I don't think is really required for what we're looking at here. So if we could, I think, I'm hearing everybody's all right with number two saying, single-family and two-family dwellings, right? And number three, accessory apartment. Is everyone telling you? We've talked about that, right?
Yeah, question on that one, you call accessory apartment?
Yeah.
Is that your in-law apartment?
Can be.
Yes.
How are you defining, do we have a definition for accessory?
Yes, with you. A separate dwelling unit that has been added on or created within a single-family home for the purpose of providing separate living accommodations.
So, commonly known as an in-law apartment.
Commonly known as an in-law apartment.
That's my words, not the definition.
Exactly, well, that's, that's how it started out in the town of Rundle, that, whereas many other towns require there'd be some sort of relational situation with the, with the primary homeowner. At this point, nobody's going to chase that, so it's an accessory apartment. The one thing that it is required, if you look at the, the, the conditional uses or the uses, the apartments for an accessory apartment, it's got to meet certain standards, one of which is it's got to be within the skin or within the, the main body of a main house, a single-family house.
Sure, because this one says has been added on.
It can be added on, but it's still got to be in the main.
Well, it can't be separate.
It can be separate.
Right.
It's not detached.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, mine is, mine is in, in the garage, is in the garage above it.
Right.
So it's kind of out.
It's dead with the breeze away from the garage.
Right.
Still attached to it.
Well, we put in all of this stuff, who cares? Let them have an accessory apartment if it's inside the house, in the garage, ten feet away, who cares?
We're not changing anything about this, it's the way we've been out.
No, I don't care.
Since 2008.
Whatever the idea is, speaking.
I don't know.
No, this, this is permitted, not conditional, meaning that anyone close there can have an accessory.
As long as they meet all the standards. Now, technically should be a, a conditional use, but we have treated it as a, as a, as a.
That'd be true in, in.
It's not approved by anybody but the CEO, let's put it this way.
I, I have a watch.
What grounds do you have to not approve?
You don't meet the standards.
Standards like.
Well, the standards are in our ordinance right now. I mean, if you go to.
So, 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 Tom, one may be a separate or independent ingress from the apartment.
Yeah, there's.
So, you know, you, to, I mean, so you couldn't just go, you know, room over the garage, call it an apartment, and run with it.
Yeah, you're having in the bedroom, the size of the separate guest room.
You have to have a separate, means a ingress for, for it to be an accessory apartment.
Yes.
That's a good condition.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you're up to it. I didn't know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a step standard, it's, it's a minimum amount, it's maximum amount of square footage, it's a maximum amount of percentage of the, of the unit.
Okay.
It's essentially, it's to allow you to have a rental unit, it's allowing you to have an in-law apartment in there, and to continue to rent it when your in-law moves on. And it's just a benefit that's provided also to a family home. It's not benefit, it's not a benefit provided to most multifamily, because quite frankly, they don't have enough room to be able to do it, quite frankly.
Okay, question.
Yep.
Along this way, of this, all this idea, are mobile homes allowed in there? Because, because you're down in that section of town where we're speaking of already, there are some. And would this be more permitted for, I'm just asking a question because.
I thought there was something in the definitions.
Yeah, that's, that's an issue that this board has not really tackled, quite frankly.
I'm throwing it out.
It does sit, see here in the proposal anyways, the dwelling unit includes, terms shall include mobile home, but not, shall not include trailers or recreational vehicles.
Can we use the word, which would be permanent structure? Because a mobile home is not, it is a permanent, but it's also movable.
Well, I could technically say all structures movable.
Yeah, that's what they told me. Yeah, that's what people said too. I'm just.
It's a different building standard. It's a different building standard for a mobile home, for a hut mobile home than it is for stick building, or a module. And the question, the question you have to ask yourself, which.
Takes precedence over the town.
Which the.
Don't go there, I do.
The Economic Development Committee has, has discussed is, you know, the, there are differences between different kinds of housing structures, very honestly. You know, they've had questions about mobile homes because of the potential for them to depreciate instead of appreciate.
That's where I'm going here, and this is supposed to be your gateway, turn around, you're right.
Well, that's, that's a very, you've touched on a very controversial.
Right now, they'd be allowed.
Right now, they would be allowed, and the issue is, you're asking the issue, do we want that?
That's right.
That's a good question.
If you're going to have this, our palace of coming into it. Well, like, I mean, since, since you're, since, since when you come back and still slam in my own way automobile repair, it's like you could turn on that mobile homes instead.
Tell me, slam you on automobile repair?
It's a conditional use.
You have conditions.
No, you, you know how I feel about it. So just, so let's, let's address.
Let me ask you a question, wait. Have we ever treated anybody with a conditional use any different than we have somebody who comes in on a cycle?
In past, yes.
Since.
Are you ask the question or I answer you?
Since 2010, let's say since 2010. Have we treated anybody differently in conditional use than we have who's coming on a cycle?
I still don't see the reason why you have to make automobile repair.
Well, let's come back to automobile repair.
That's where I'm going at.
I think it's the same reasons that Jamie mentioned, because the amount of, of material that's involved and some of the things that have to, have to be done.
Fuels.
Fuels and waste products and so forth.
Traffic.
Traffic.
Just like we, we put that, we put that same standard in a lot of things.
So, do we want to discuss?
Right, I had the road if you.
It's like the street lights do.
That can take traffic.
Do we? It's, do we want to discuss mobile homes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna have it for a question.
I think it should very much be part of our discussion next week, you know, prompted by our sort of head. So, would it be on here like with a question mark?
Thank you.
Well, I just hold a lightning rod out here.
Yeah.
Well, but, for the meeting, let's add item twenty-two, mobile home, question mark.
Well.
Well, mobile homes are prohibited.
Mobile homes are permitted.
As in, as in now?
What you're saying is.
So, so, right, if we wanted to spark a conversation, we put, single-family resident or whatever, if we decided on the terminology, excluding mobile homes, and if people take issue, we'll know about it.
Right. There are a few mobile homes right there already, so.
But they're already legal established.
Right, but, I'm just saying, the sentiment might be.
And also, the thing to remember also is Pocke Row, that area in there is a part of our designated mobile home park area. We have designated areas in town, and that's one of the areas that's designated for a mobile home.
Yeah, but they're side of the gateway.
Yeah, this gateway.
That's a gateway.
Yep.
I think Marty bring up a good point, this is a business gateway, you know, mixed use and.
Right.
We hopefully get some.
Emphasis is really on, on non-residents.
Right, we hopefully get businesses, but.
Do we actually have a mobile, mobile home overlay district stat in Arundel?
Yes.
I would recommend, on my behalf as the town manager, that those mobile home overlay districts remain where they are.
Yes, and we are not.
Which the definition of mobile home, if you don't find that definition in a, in a permitted or a conditional use, then it's not.
However, the, the, the difference between, distinction between the overlay issues is a mobile home park versus a single family, single ownership.
Oh, it's a mobile park overlay. Unless we were to say that mobile homes were only allowed in a mobile home park.
We are allowed to do that.
We are allowed to do that.
We give them in town, but we do not have to let them all over.
That's correct.
Might be not an easy.
It's not a very good political.
No, it's a difficult one in there, but it is, it is an issue.
But in this district, they're looking for, it's a small district that, that.
That has a lot of.
Yes, yeah. Done.
One of the things that the Compliment Plan Committee spent a lot of time on and tried to be very sensitive to is the concept of property rights. So, if a person owns a piece of land in town, anywhere in town, and they wish to reside on that piece of property, and what they can afford is a mobile home, who are we to tell them they cannot do so?
Right.
And if you want a lightning rod, there's one. Now, I, I'll extend that, I also have a lot of concerns about the restrictive nature of a lot of the language in the ordinance in general, particularly with regards to inviting businesses into town, and having had some discussions with some business owners who do not live in town. A new business starting up is not necessarily flush with capital. So, if we want them to come into town and start, but not necessarily start here, we need to find a way to be able to let them start here, build their business and their capital, and eventually get there. So, respecting the individual and their current situation, particularly financially, is something I would like the board to keep at the top of their mind as all of this stuff gets discussed. Because I think that's, that, that's gonna be the basis for another rejection.
Okay. I'll start now, I'm gonna just, for the sake of discussion of what Donna just said, looking at it from the town manager's perspective, a mobile home is a very expensive financially proposition for a town. I'm not going to be stereotypical, I'm going to just state it as a fact, mobile homes in Arundel average between three and six hundred dollars a year in tax revenue for the town. If you put three children in a mobile home, that is a sinking of funds for the municipality. I'm not saying that they don't belong here, I'm just saying that please also take that into consideration as you move forward and we are attempting to diversify the tax revenue, that is a place that you'll always have a negative revenue stream.
We'll get it off.
Talking single wide or double?
The single wide, typical, that's typical single wide.
Did they put three kids in there?
Oh, absolutely.
And more. That's where all the kids.
Hey, that's like being on a ship. Ah, Paul.
That's where the family definition.
Fifty guys in this. All right, so I'm gonna get back to the number four, we're all done with accessory apartments.
Yeah.
Accessory building structures or uses customarily incidental or subordinate to conforming or legally non-conforming principle buildings or use. So.
That's just sheds, your garages, it's an accessory structure. It's not a primary structure, it's a support structure.
And we have definition of.
Accessory structure.
I think, I think. We're all right with that, any, any issues with that?
We don't really wanna bring other people from any garden shed.
No, that'd be a problem. All right, number five, agriculture.
It's a big issue.
What do you want, they're all the slop?
Well, no, there's some, there's some lands, and they grow something on. If that's what we want. Who's the, where the horses are right in there?
Where? Are roped down there, there's no horses down there.
Well, they used to have, right, heading north on the right side. There were horses there, but it, it looks like it's pretty dry.
High ground, yeah. Is agriculture in there only because we've said that we're going to encourage it throughout Arundel? I mean, on the one hand, we say we're trying to develop business, use the land to the most cost-effective and try to bring in business. But agriculture is something that we were going to allow throughout Arundel, is that not why it's there?
I mean. One of the reasons it's there is also good land holding use, because agriculture can be reversed from the standpoint of easily building, building on agricultural land. So it's a good holding place, if somebody wants to cultivate land down there, whether they want rice paddies in some sections, or, or, or put in a, a small operation like Noah's got, quite frankly, Noah's operation isn't huge, as you well know. And he, he does a good, and he can have a retail farm, retail shop there because of it.
About growing butt?
If, if a higher and better use comes along, is willing to pay, buy it out, then, then we moved on to a higher and better use, but it's a good place holding.
Right, that's the higher and better use.
Huh?
That's the higher and better use.
What, butt, butt growing?
Okay.
Okay, so there are agriculture.
What?
Uh, there's even craftment studios, similar to in, in the other district, or like that, commercial services?
Bank.
Bank, yeah. What else would we include with that?
Car wash.
Okay, so it really, it's a lot of different things.
A lot of things. Let's see, what's, I actually put, I think I put the definition at the bottom of this one, because I. That came up last time, so I wanted to make sure, is that the, if you look at page two of the floor, you'll see commercial services or business other than a personal service, business or home business, or professional office engaging in the provision of a service, and not goods or commodities. Examples included to banks and other financial institutions, cleaning or repairing businesses, pet grooming, auto redemption centers, or funeral homes.
It's a catch-all.
It's a catch-all, just what we want.
No tattoos.
No tattoos.
Not a personal service.
No, it's not a personal service, it says aside, yes, but it says aside from personal service.
What about your wife? Well, you still do the business.
Yes, it's not a commercial, it's not a commercial service.
Personal.
What, you think you're afraid?
It falls under personal services.
Personal is further down anyway, so, yeah. All right, so let's, daycare home, uh, day, it's like a day.
Home daycare.
Home daycare, daycare home is just the, the definition that we have, it's for, for less than twelve kids.
Twelve kids.
Six, no, it's twelve, it's less than.
Twelve.
Full it over as a daycare center.
Well, that's all right, it's right along with what?
In-home daycare.
It's basically in-home daycare.
Thirteen or more is daycare center, daycare home is three to twelve.
Okay, who's one? Uh, farm retail?
Those with agriculture.
Why not? Uh, home occupations, we want that, lodgings, including, including boarding houses.
And that's your bed and breakfast, too?
No, lodging includes bed and breaks.
Not hotel or motel, is it?
Yes.
Lodging includes.
Lodging definition, if you look generally, is on page three or four.
Oh.
On the new one?
No, it's the same line, it's the one we've been using. I put it in there so we could reference it.
Well, that works for me. Everybody all right? Going to museums, not to exceed, exceed ten thousand square feet.
Net, at least on the area. Hey, where, where is, what is the logic for the ten thousand one square feet?
I don't remember now.
Otherwise, you'd have to say ten thousand or less.
It's just like your commercial inspection, ten thousand, ten thousand and one is turned on commercial.
Yeah.
So why not, why not just do not to exceed ten thousand, that's inclusive of ten thousand?
We can do that.
So somebody did.
Or that would be two hundred by five hundred.
The question is, let's, let's go to a bigger question, what size buildings do we want in this district? Do we want any limitations of building sizes in this district?
Compliment is small, medium scale.
Small, small to medium, and we've kind of gone to this ten thousand in other district, and it even worked out well in rhythm. But, we've always talked the building. Here you somehow added net leaseable area, so I could have a building as big as town, but I'm only going to use, this is my lease area. I think you need to get that out of there personally.
Well, we, well, then you're gonna have, then we're gonna have to go through the table and come up with a, a maximum building size now.
Ten thousand?
Square feet. Well, that is that medium.
Yeah.
We have said small is five, correct?
Yeah. You only classify that when you were down into the, the other district, but beforehand. I thought you're supposed to be business friendly.
Marty, I don't have too many places that are over ten thousand square feet in all town.
Pretty good size.
It's a good size building.
I don't know what, I don't know what a building looks like, I own one.
I, I understand that, Marty, but what I'm saying is the compliment says small to medium.
Yeah.
Small to medium, so the question is, what do we define as medium? They didn't define it, it's up to you guys to define.
It's up to us to define.
It's up to you to define, now I'm throwing out ten thousand, you tell me if that's too small, fine, I can go higher than ten thousand, because we've got a hundred thousand over in the, in the DB two district, right? And we have a hundred thousand up on the ARD district, which we haven't even started.
With ARD?
That's basically, uh, that's up along the Arundel Road.
Oh, that's a little name for another road, another section?
Well, that's the, that's, that's the district that the compliment committee named. Arundel Road, excuse me, Alfred Road District mainly because, you know, everybody knows Alfred Road, so that's what they.
I don't know if we settled on this, but I just went back to, you know, I don't know, in all of our iterations of DBs now. But I'm seeing here, business retail uses of twenty thousand.
Yep.
And I would say that this would be probably comparable to the DB one.
But, we, we are something very long away, we don't have a lot of land down there, and we're gonna move these things.
But people, if they wanna do something and have the desire, they can conglomerate land.
Well, we're, we're gonna. Bring it down to a lot of. An acre? Oh, yeah, that's what I'm going.
I'm not gonna be able to sit ten thousand.
An acre? I'm not trying.
Yeah, there may be something.
It's always a issue.
There could be some.
Well, there's two or three of them. You have to know the area. I don't care what's enough to ruin them. There's setbacks in the size of the lots down there, limit a lot of this stuff.
They will.
They will, and you don't have, you're not required to build on an acre. We have, we have a piece of property, and it's a huge piece of property that has access on to that.
Cool.
So, so how big, thinking of the other end of Route One, how big is, is the IP?
Fifteen.
So, if there was a parcel of land that, or multiple parcels of land that somebody put together, would a VIP be a legitimate use in that zone?
What is the chance?
I, I personally think that it would be, I think it would be a great use right there. So, I would rather see that a little bigger to accommodate a potential use along those lines.
But then, given, I, I can't disagree, as long as it fits the site and, and I.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna have to, I mean.
I don't, we don't wanna go into standards too quickly here, but if it was just a constant hut, at twenty thousand square feet, it may not work with the rest of the, of that.
Might not be a great gateway.
Yeah, it might not be a good gateway.
Sure, but. But that's right, but that's up there. Selling fireworks, right on the town line.
As long as we have some standards that, that can make it work, and that's a controversial issue.
It is.
We haven't passed that through Calum and Eric. Not this town, so I wonder how, how the town.
Well, that's, that's gonna be the whole issue, what do you want your town to look like?
Yeah.
And what do you want your damn town to look like, it's, you know, it's up to you, it's up to the taxpayers, what do you want your town to look like? That's your selection. If you don't care, then fine, terrific, if you do care, then you have to define it somehow, the board knows it, because you're the guys who have to tell people that this meets that standard or doesn't.
And I'm just saying, if the town doesn't care to have standards, then I don't wanna go along with the twenty thousand square foot building. So it's a, it's a trade-off.
Well, but aren't the design standards part of the zone?
They can be, I mean.
Right, we've done it with Townhouse Corner, we've done it with DB one and two.
We've done it with one.
Okay.
And probably ARD will not have it, we won't be in Alfred Road District, probably won't have it either.
Well, it's up to you guys.
Right.
It's up to you.
I, I think that there are some standards, I think.
The scale of that building would require some type of, of standards, design standards to make it work.
Mrs. Scher, you are more than welcome at any time to not recognize me as well, I know that these conversations sometime get.
Long as you're quick.
Do you define net leaseable area at that?
I do have a definition of.
Okay, so if I have a thirty thousand square foot building and I'm only leasing ten thousand square feet, I'm meeting the intent of the ordinance?
Well, leaseable, the, the leaseable area is gonna be that area that's leasable.
Right, but if I own it and I'm not going to lease it to anybody, then it's not leasable.
The, the leaseable definition is not a matter of leasing, it's a matter of.
It defines.
It defines the, the, the layout inside, what's usable, it excludes certain, certain areas.
Okay.
Well.
I don't have a current one.
Yeah, I think we gotta be careful with that.
We don't need to even have that.
We don't have it.
Gentlemen, these are recommendations, this is to start the discussion, Jamie's already said ten thousand is too small. I haven't even gotten to that point yet, and that's.
Well, long before Jamie, I requested we remove the other, with all due respect.
We can make it leasable, we can make it gross, leasable was, quite frankly, to, as Todd just pointed out, would allow you to have a larger building.
Yeah, well, it was that story. What's the point of having a maximum if, well, you can have a larger one.
Well, it's a leasable area, you know, the area that, that is used.
Where is that definition, is that in this rule package you just gave us?
I think I have in.
So you intend there to be, they would allow you to have your mechanical rooms in addition to your ten thousand square.
So your mechanical rooms, some of your common areas are not included in that. So is it gonna make it bigger, yeah, if you're unscrupulous, you're gonna have the five thousand square foot, terrific, but you're not leasing it.
Do we wanna get into measuring though, or would it be easier just, it's a size building?
If we think. Absolutely, I'm just trying to make it, I was just, I was trying to, to hit a target of a specific market group that is ten thousand, and they look at the ten thousand as a leasable area, as something they lease, they, they don't wanna pay for the mechanic rooms, they don't wanna pay for the common areas, if I'm, if I'm in a, in a complex, I wanna only, and I need ten thousand square feet because that's my business model, that excludes all the junk stuff that I don't wanna pay for, common bathrooms, mechanical rooms.
I think it would be easier to add another thousand square feet just to.
But I think Jamie's made the proposal that we get out of, we, we, we go to a larger building anyways.
Yeah, and I agree, I would, I think for the sake of, for, for people understanding, for people interpreting, you know, buildings, have a building.
building, have a building size.
Yeah.
And stick with it. And we don't care if you have, if you have six square feet of leasable area and.
Whatever you did on the inside.
Nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four of, of whatever else you wanna do, that's fine. You can have a, in what I proposed, twenty thousand square foot building.
And I don't think you have to take out a definition because I don't find it in any of them.
I haven't written that one yet. I have a definition. I just haven't put it in because I don't know if you got it.
I don't see it yet. I'll have to make it as well.
This, this might help. In the com, in the com plan, in DB one, it says DB one district has from the small to medium, twenty thousand square feet. So the com plan has defined medium as twenty thousand square feet. Gateway District is doing small to medium, so medium for consistency's sake might be twenty thousand square feet.
So that's already in the.
It is in DB one, yes.
Know what?
Well, and that's where I went back and looked was what was in DB one.
Well, I just have to, just throw out there, that's a size that's bigger than every building in town except for the school. Twenty thousand, so all of a sudden our medium is bigger than largest buildings in town.
Kate's Center is eighteen thousand, isn't it?
Yeah, that's a big building.
It's built bigger than Kate's.
That's huge.
Bigger than a rental machine.
Yeah. And that one next means huge. Huge.
It's half the size of Kenneth.
It's huge.
Yeah.
So, and, no, I'm sort of opposed to it, but it's, but medium and large and, and small, we're, we're changing the whole definition of that. And I don't know where that number came from, twenty thousand square feet. Kind of snuck up on us.
It, it came from two places. In terms of tents, again, the reason we looked at DB one, DB two was to encourage businesses to come to town. That's what we were looking to do without terrifically interfering with residential in those districts. Hence the mixed-use concept. The twenty thousand square feet came basically because we were, we were looking for some guidance, a number we can hang our thoughts on. So I, I believe I have to lay the twenty thousand square feet at Tag's doorstep, but.
Absolutely, I'll take it.
The comprehensive planning committee said that was reasonable. Now, in the Gateway District, because it's so tiny, it seems to me that the, the, the pieces of land, even if some of them are combined, are going to present some serious site constraints. So the chances of ever having Kate's Center or its equivalent in the Gateway District are probably slim to none. But at least the potential is there. If somebody comes along and says, we'll give the town a boatload of tax money if you let us build this big building.
If it would, it's, it's still, the scale of that right there, Kate's looks large, but it's, it has forty acres to blend in with. But if that same was, you come, you come up over, you wouldn't even have to come up over the bridge. You could see it from, from the lights at, at, at Route one spur.
Sack.
But I guess so.
But if you wanna, if you wanna play devil's advocate, if, if it's a good business for town, what's wrong with that?
Well, that's, no.
Put a sign that says, welcome to Arundle.
Well, after, what, what if it's a bad business at that size?
What would be a bad business?
If it's a bad business, then you guys didn't do your job.
Auto repair job. I'm trying to do a job correctly, not auto, auto repair. Totally in trouble. I'm just curious, what size champagne new building is it?
Three thousand.
Two thousand?
Two thousand.
So it would be ten times the size of that.
Well, what's the size of Weird's Body Shop?
Weird's Body Shop, my guess, less than fifteen? Fifteen?
No, it's not fifteen.
I guess it's four thousand? I don't know. How big's yours?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And Weird's Body Shop, a lot bigger than mine shop.
If anybody's been by, call, uh, the suburb you're sitting, it's on the main lane, his new buildings he's putting up are seventy-five hundred square feet. And that's seventy-five feet by a hundred feet. That's a considerable size.
Huge, yeah.
Doesn't sound it when you say seventy-five hundred square feet until you look at it and wow.
That's also impressive because it's so high too. It's got folks, it's a big building. You guys call bananas.
So I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I'm also thinking that we, we have to sell this to the, to the voters to approve, so.
Well, it's kinda hard to put a ten thousand square foot building on that one acre lot.
I know, but like Jamie said a few times, you couldn't buy, you couldn't consolidate.
But they're not all one acre. That's the point. Look at some of these. Some of these are not one acre.
Okay. Point out, point out to me.
That's not one acre. Forty-five, that's, that's more than one acre. Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, his, that's, that one down there turned on the town line is three point five acres.
Yeah.
Right there.
And that one is a little bit over an acre.
Yeah.
That's the antique shop.
Yeah.
This one is, I don't, I'm not sure about.
But you can't even see it because it's buried underneath the ground.
Maybe it's a wood point. Maybe.
Really, it's a ton of wood point.
Yeah.
But I mean, you do have some, you have, you have some, some larger pieces here. There's a large piece that's gonna be about, about four or five acres there. I mean, you can put in a ten thousand square foot building. You can actually get a ten thousand, depending on the use, you can get a ten thousand square foot building in an acre of land. Sure, you can. It depends on the use. If it's warehousing and you only need four parking spaces for, for employees, of course you can.
Well, it depends if you have a seven foot.
That's right. Wait, and you have seventy percent, you have seventy percent of purpose in that area. I think that's what we, we're sticking with seventy percent.
I said a lot of, of, I would be a hotel.
Right into the floor. What, what time do we wanna try to get out of here? Nine o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we're on museum. The, the size of the building got us off track a little bit. Well, but I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna tail into.
The discussion and the twenty thousand.
The rest of personal service, professional service, restaurant, you know.
All those have same.
Maybe not restaurant, but. So.
One time.
For now, the, the number is, I, I might.
To be determined.
To be determined, but museum, we are right with that. Municipal use.
Terminated.
Yeah.
Tell me, I'm just saying, react louder.
You'll be surprised pretty soon, Marty. Very surprised. Is that what I'm saying? Public, public utility.
Yeah.
Personal services, same thing, professional offices, I think we're all right. Just.
Do we have one tattoo parlors down there? Do we wanna talk about tattoo parlors? We've already had one down there. I mean, let's talk about it. It's literally everybody was.
He didn't hear that.
They asked me why I let it go in. It's a, it's.
Um, limited use.
Okay.
That's why.
You know, I got some grief on that. So tell me, uh, tell me, is that something, tell me what you don't want down there. Seriously. Because this is the chance. This is your gateway. On the other side of this, you've got business district. This is gonna be your main business district. There's words, just about anything knows a business. Back to that. This is your gateway. This says, hi, welcome to Arundle. We wanted to say, what, what kind of businesses say, hi, welcome to Arundle? What do you want here? What, what don't you want? Let's, let's, let's go into status business. Go backwards. What don't you wanna see down there?
You mean we can't have a golden bananas down there?
Okay, there's a good question.
The words went out of my mouth.
There's the question.
I, it's not a legitimate question. What do you guys feel about tattoo policy or any other uses?
If you wanna get in, that's your problem.
Very land, it's very, when you're talking about.
Thereby.
Talking about what you're trying, wouldn't have this gateway, remember, this gateway is only here to create an entrance into the town. And also it gives the property owners some more opportunity with their land than they currently have because, frankly speaking, most of these properties down here can't really, they can't really, they can't really make it given the BI district requirements and given the kind of uses. They're not attractive to those kinds of uses. And so there, a number of the property owners are, are in favor of this because it lets them subdivide a couple pieces of property they can't right now um, because of the frontage requirements in, in the BI district. So it's gonna be smaller stuff and it's going to be character area. They wanna have character, then the, quite frankly, the antique dealer is, is screaming for help, helping to survive here because I'm in the middle of, of something that's antithetical to what I do. How do I create character here so people will come to my store and not drive by? And there's a number of other property owners that say the same thing. I can't sell my land. Nobody wants to be here. It's too small. It's, nobody knows we're here. Uh, and the sign is on the other side of the railroad tracks. So this is your entrance to your town. This is sort of like a civic pride district. And then so what do you want? What don't you want? What do you want? And we got lots of, we got the rest of Route one or everything else. Certainly in BI district, we got all the way down the campground practically. To put everything else in. This is special. Or, or if it isn't, if we're not gonna do it, if it's not special, let's get rid of it. We'll just stay with the BI. But this is something, some of the folks here.
Yeah, and getting a smaller, allowing more business, giving the opportunity for it to build and to grow, be useful for the town. Everybody agrees with you. We've gone over this two or three times, and I think this board has responded to you in the same way two or three times. Sometimes we go to the extreme, okay? And sometimes you're looking ten, ten years out, fifteen years out to sell them. The bigger issue from where I'm sitting, and then I'll be quiet and go to the dog, is welcome, welcome to Arundle. We're here for business. Oh, but if you're this kind of business, don't come. And if you've got a crooked face, don't come. We're either gonna be open for business or we're not.
Sure, we're open for business, but you've been open for business down here for years and years and years. So it's not like we're stopping business. Nothing's happened.
None of that area has been really open for business.
Sure it has. It's BI.
You can.
It's all BI business.
Yeah, major.
Was they she want? But God's right, Studd ever got business in.
Well, no, you know what I'm saying, Bob. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm saying it's open for business. It's not like we're, we're prohibiting business.
I, but that's what you're looking for, for us to prohibit certain business. That's what, I mean, and I understand that, and to one degree, I agree with you. However, looking at everything that we're trying to do and looking into the future, that's, it's hard to attract some business.
Well, you can, you can say that we wanna have, uh, Bass Pro Shop move in here.
Oh.
Yeah, sure. But that doesn't mean they're gonna want to.
I agree. Todd, you. I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna not generalize, as I understand John, uh, Bob's frustration. The question I think that each of you should be asking yourselves as you go through this, if you already are, please let me know and correct me if I'm wrong, but do we want Route one in Saugus? Do we want Route one in Wiscasset? Or do we want something in between? And so I have tattoos. I have friends that have tattoos. I'm a supporter of tattoo shops. But in my, the idea of a gateway, for me, Arundle doesn't want a tattoo shop in that gateway.
I've seen some, I've seen some very, I don't like tattoos. I don't get tattoos. I've seen some very attractive tattoos in tattoo shops.
Okay. And, and, and that's where it comes.
To the design side of it.
Yeah, it gets to the design. Exactly. I, you know, you can put up a wall and you can have Joe's Ice Cream Shop or Joe's Tattoo Parlour. And if the building looks nice and inviting and people will come into it and say, wow, Arundle, you know, must be a nice town. Yeah, they got a tattoo shop, but eh, it's a, it's a upscale looking tattoo shop, you know? Maybe it, it, it pervades a good image.
And one might wanna come to Arundle and one might wanna go to the Gateway District, and it might be within the next ten years.
And on the same note that Jamie just said, you could allow every single type of business along Route one, any kind of business that you want. As soon as you discuss design standards, you're gonna alienate the people who say you're being too, you're, you're putting business out of town. So you can have anything you want on Route one. Impose a design standard and it's gonna aggravate, and you gotta come out.
That would be unfriendly to business and more expensive for startups and it's tough to have it both.
It is. So are we unfriendly by, by.
Right, by limiting size or limiting number of businesses or by?
We're trying to open up, but in my opinion, we would be business friendly by allowing any kind of business, but make it look nice.
Question, simple. Why don't we do it this way? Have all businesses permitted? And you just, instead of no conditional, just permit it. And that's what? You're opening it up for this gateway district.
Can't do that, Marty. And I'm gonna hit you again right now. I'm just gonna, you brought the subject up.
Yeah.
Auto repair shop.
Yeah.
Has to be conditions on it. Why? Because you store materials that need to be stored in proper manner. You use products that are, if possible, possibly detrimental to the environment.
Yeah.
So you need blast rooms. You need, so without those conditions, it gives nobody the ability to review and somebody can come in and just open a twenty-four by twenty-four wood frame garage, say I'm a, a, a repaired, you know?
That makes sense, okay.
So that's why those conditional uses need to be there. It's not that there's anything wrong with your business. It's the nature of what you do that can be bad to the environment.
That makes sense, okay? Well, what I've just said, as you would just say, have anything per se, that's why I said, anything permitted.
Okay, I wanna get back to, I, I'm not hearing members of the board, um, throw out any exemptions for types of businesses. Say, speak up if you think something should be excluded.
Okay, so.
My, I'll just say, my opinion is I'd rather have a business that brings in tax revenue than no business at all. So let's not be overly restrictive.
Well, and remember, I mean, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, from an assessment perspective, does a, does a ten thousand square foot massage parlor versus a ten thousand square foot bank have a, a huge, well, maybe banks are not a, probably a good example, but.
No, they have a lot of personal problems.
Another, um, another comparable type of business really have a different assessed value?
Yes.
Yeah.
They do?
Sure.
Yes, because of the nature of, like, look at a rental machine tool. He has millions and millions of dollars of equipment in that building that we gain value from. So you can have the same building with a masseuse, masseuse in it that wouldn't be worth as much to the town. So it all depends on the nature of the business that they're doing.
The nature of what it is, personal equipment, or that, that's our sticking point with Marty all the time, how we have business.
But also, also a, an office building, let's say just a, a, a.
Yeah.
A small office building versus champagne's. Champagne's is a, is an office building that's well appointed, very well done, and that valuation will be much higher than a, than a, than a, a metal building office building. It's just because the quality of the materials is hard. It's better for the town in terms of, of its assessed value. And frankly speaking, you have one really nice building, you're more likely to attract somebody who wants to put a business next to it.
Next to it.
And then another one that's next to that. And then you start creating an area where more and more businesses want to come because they kind of have quality and they get more customers. And that's kind of what we're looking at here. We're saying that the no holes bar approach that we've been using for the last ten years isn't really, they're not, they're not stampeding down the doors. But maybe if we, if we try to make it look better and make it more attractive and make more businesses wanna look at Arundle more seriously, might have a better rate of development, a faster rate of development, get more people in here to, to build. And that's, I think, what we're all trying to achieve. All trying to achieve the same goal. The object is, what method are we using to achieve that?
So, um, I think that needs to be done, a lot of it through design standards. And, um, you know, I'm not hearing to exclude certain types of businesses, so.
Look, we can bring it up as a point.
With public, public hearing, I will hear more about that. Can we move on? We've got ten minutes. We're at recreational facilities passive. What were the passive ones?
Oh, that's not active.
Oh, okay. So you go take a nap?
Yeah, yeah, it parks, I, you know, it, it basically wasn't, you wouldn't put a, it, you know, the passive, I believe is, I don't believe it could, you know, affect the vision. Parks and. Yeah, it's a parks and rec.
Okay.
So the question is, do you, do we want other things? Do we wanna active?
I don't know if we should exclude a little park.
Yeah, I mean. It doesn't bring in any tax revenue.
Well, but, but how would, say if somebody wanted to put in a rock wall climbing facility?
Right, that's exactly it.
Active.
Um, I don't know, it's like parks and rec.
Yeah, that'd be commercial.
No one has.
Commercial.
Or, or, or.
Parks and recreation. Well, no, I think the definition needs to change because we've changed the definition.
Okay.
Remember, we did this a while ago, and some of the awards that we have in here, we've changed since, since Townhouse Corner. So what we have right now, recreation, how do we define recreation now?
Recreation, it has, there's two, two different recreational facilities. One is commercial recreation. Any commercial enterprise which receives a fee and they return to the provision. One is commercial recreation, any commercial enterprise which receives a fee in return for the provision of some recreational activity, including but not limited to movie theaters, racket clubs, health, fitness facilities, and amusement parks. Then the opposite is parks and recreation, which is a facility that is not commercially operated, is open to the general public, including, not limited to playgrounds, parks, monuments, green strips, open space, mini-parks, athletic fields, boat parks, ramps, different docks, lounge, swimming pools, wildlife, ice grounds, but not, they can't, grounds, commercial.
The language is not consistent, but a rock climbing place will be commercial. Not passive.
So we didn't change language.
Here it says commercial, where did we go?
You know what, what, I don't, I don't really see the harm in doing that, I think if, what property owner.
That owns a planet that's gonna potentially say, okay.
Well, you should have to, have to be consistent with our definition.
Right.
So I mean, that's where, I mean, I, I.
Okay.
So, so from that standpoint, what you read on the commercial recreation.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, that seems like it's a, a good fit in that zone, is, you know, you may draw people from.
From over.
That's the recreational ones, the rock climbing, yeah, health and fitness. So I think we're all like that.
So I think, I think it should be recreational facilities, not commercial.
Or commercial. What about the passive one, you know, your parks, recreation, what, what about that?
Just go recreational facilities.
Yeah, just leave it.
Yeah, cover it, say, leave it.
Now, the thing that we might run into is, we might have this next to some residence there, say, I don't want a rock climbing place next to it. I'm not sure if they'll like that, and that's what we, that's what we're gonna have to ask about, ask them about on, in two weeks, because that will get some conflict, we may get some conflict, as we saw, will it happen in Townhouse Corner?
Right. What we'll have to get from them.
The, the difference, though, if I had to bet, is that people who own a residence along Route One probably have come to terms a little bit more with commercial development around them versus residents of the Townhouse Corner.
Agreed.
I mean, just intuitively, it would seem to make sense. If you're right there, I mean, just south of all the commercial development in Bedford, you probably have come to terms a little more that, that you're in a quasi-commercial area.
Agreed. So we'll find out, but if we put it in recreation, if we put it in recreation, it's both. Right.
One last question on recreation facilities, are we not allowing the passive or parks and recreation?
No, we just take us twelve.
Just recreation.
On your condition, you're allowed.
Okay. Another question would be, how about bill cards?
Well, you're excluding the power sports amusement.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now we're on to restaurants, sure, any issues that, I think we want them. Retail's less than a thousand, or whatever, we'll come up with that square feet later. Timber harvesting, forty percent or less.
Not too much forestry in that area anyway, but.
You have to put these things in there, it's like, if, if, if you're gonna allow that kind of, they timber harvest everywhere.
Yeah.
So remember that when we have, but if we don't put timber harvesting in, you can't timber harvest. Remember, we're going to omit it uses, so if it's not listed, it's not permitted.
Okay.
So let's go the opposite direction, is there anything that we're missing in here that we want to make sure that's included?
Well, that should be there.
Any kind of uses.
Oh, if they aren't with that. Yard sale.
That's the rate all over town.
All over town.
Are there, anything else that should be, anybody can think of?
Flea market considered yard sale?
No.
But they're outside RE.
Well, that would be retail, and the issue of outside retail is something we have not really addressed.
No, it doesn't really say that flea market.
You don't get much tax value out of that.
No, we don't, but the issue is, it does bring people in, the question is, is that something we wanna exclude?
One more camera roll does a great job.
Holiday trees, yeah.
They'll do retail.
It's agriculture.
If they grow on.
Or retail.
It's farm retail.
If they grow on site.
Yeah, that's grow on site. But that would be considered retail. That's retail. The question is, in the past, the town has been very adamant about limiting the amount of outdoor storage, or outdoor retailers. Usually twenty-five-hundred square feet, currently, they're limiting twenty-five-hundred square feet. The question is, do we, do we need to put in some sort of, because I think our retail basically says facilities, and it doesn't really give a good definition of that's indoor or outdoor, is there an issue with it being outdoor?
Well, shall we tell?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, well, I think the flea market issue is, is directly, the issue. We'll get a lot of revenue.
Yeah, we're looking for the revenue, we're, one of the things is one, there's not much we get out of flea market, right?
Well, what are we getting out of it now? Nothing.
Right.
Something's better than nothing.
Well, not if you can't tax it, you just set up some.
Well, with a one motor repair, we'd get a lot more out of it.
Well, do we wanna keep going, we got two minutes.
Marty's concerned you're gonna, you're gonna create more competition.
That would piss.
I don't give a. I got enough competition, I don't like it, all of us are dying.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna fly through these conditional uses, that's all right. One motor repair, conditional use. We're all right with that, drive-through facilities, that would include banks and restaurants.
McDonald's.
Okay.
One we don't have here.
We're all right with that. Daycare center, now, that is ten or more, is it?
Yep, it's twelve or more, thirteen or more.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Low impact manufacturing. That was, you have the, I don't know if that's the right number or not, but we can.
Well, we usually use five or six.
Yep. Okay, if you're all right, I'm gonna go on multi-family dwellings.
You're in conditional.
The conditional. Head daycare centers. All right. And that, well, we have provisions on Palmen and Roy's and stuff like that. We want that right next to a restaurant.
Well, we have standards for that.
They'll be running out of restaurants, selecting them, we're thirsty.
Make it a Chinese restaurant.
Somebody's going in.
What tractor storage yards?
Well, we have, we have, we have two different types of contractor storage yards. We have one and two, already customers, already been stated on the contract yards two, that allow up to the ten, up to ten thousand gallons of fuel and et cetera.
Yeah, is that the right use?
And yet, we just went through a business that started out small, and wanted to make opportunities for people to grow, and yet our orders wouldn't allow them to, to grow until we changed the whole thing. So you get caught in these juxtaposed positions, I, I guess I'll say. So, but what, what is best for that? I just wanted to make sure with you, prove it, you're doing both, the way that you're.
So the question is, yeah, the reason why I didn't say one or two is that is a question for the board. Remember, two is anything, you know, is, is a larger operation? Is that an appropriate place, or do we let that stay in BI and?
BI and, yeah.
DB two, there's more room in there.
Much more room, it's, it's actually geared for a larger, and we do have a couple contractors down there. But, but the building, the building contractor, which you exempt.
Okay, so there would be a lot of.
Building contractors.
I'd like to see this limited to, to one.
You guys wrote it.
That was a good answer.
It's existing now, don't look in there, it's existing.
Yeah, this is my.
I think the storage yards two would be, we have too much.
I've got my room.
When the neighboring businesses.
Look up the.
Any other, any other input on that? What tractor storage yards?
Number one.
You, you, I, I think one would be appropriate, two might have too much of an impact down there.
I'm good with that.
So it's one?
Okay, non-residential institutions, including the educational region.
Remember how we did this in, in, in Townhouse Corner?
Yeah.
So the issue is, schools, clubs, things like that.
About churches, churches.
Yeah, we have one existing right now, that's true.
So what's the logic of that being a conditional use?
Churches don't get taxed apart.
Oh, actually, there's.
They just suck it in and take it away from you.
I, you know, in, in some cases, there isn't any good reason for it to be valid, because we don't have any real standards on those. So it could be, it could be a human use.
Maybe we should.
Yeah, so would be service clubs, like Eagles or service clubs, I think that was where it was. I think it was because of the service club, especially if they serve alcohol. I think that's why.
Well, be good for, good for police, they'll be right there on the line all the time. So was the recommendation of A up to permitted?
Well.
They're stretching it now.
How about service, do you want service clubs serving alcohol?
No.
Well, yeah.
Well, how can we restrict the service club not to? That has to go to the board to select one.
Well, it would be, I mean, I'm saying as a use, that would stay as a conditional use.
I think, yeah, if one's that, that serve alcohol should be conditional, but the others.
Okay, so churches would be current use?
Yeah.
How about tavern?
They sure will.
No, we don't have taverns or salons in this, we've got a DB one and DB two. Public, public utilities, also, I think we also have it in the.
We have public utilities up above.
Are they permitted?
Yeah, which one is it?
Yeah, public utilities should always be.
It's in there already.
Yeah, my mistake, it should always be conditional.
Okay, so group out it from those, we'll look at that. All right, takeout restaurant?
Sure.
Timber harvesting, it's, was already up above, so.
It's forty percent or more.
Or more, okay, all right.
You regulate, remember, you regulate timber harvesting forty percent or more.
Okay, sounds good.
That's why it's in.
That's not in, not in this association with.
Uh, sorry, no.
Okay. Recreation facilities, commercial, excluding power sports amusement.
Uh, I think we put them, didn't you put that up? Well, no, we did keep those down.
So that would be.
I thought we were gonna make them. Up above, recreational, commercial, excluding power sports amusement.
Well, both recreational, commercial, and parks and rec, wherever they come.
Well, commercial was broken into two, so if you just said recreational, commercial, excluding the thing. You get one of them.
Not really, but both parks and recreation was.
Doesn't sound right.
That's, well, passive, not more.
You want, you want a passive up above, the, the fact is, do you want to continue to exclude power sports?
I thought, I heard all recreational facilities up above, except for power sports.
Yeah. Anything else we can call out?
Right.
Anything else that we're missing? Warehousing, do we want a warehouse?
Taverns and salons.
What about, what about garden center? That's, that's why I really worry about excluded or permitted uses, because.
I agree, I, I agree. Boy, we're playing the crystal ball for ten years, how can you include everything?
Garden center, um.
You don't know what's gonna come in ten years.
Right, that's why we changed this one.
Probably should be a permitted.
Yeah, the question is, why do we distinguish between a garden center and a retail?
We have, oh.
Of why, why?
Because the garden center has, is sort of agricultural, has lots of outside storage.
Okay, so it's an outside, well, you know, our, our definition of retail makes no, our definition does not restrict outside retail.
It's separately listed.
It does not.
It does not.
I thought part of that was because, uh, for quantity of, of bark mulch, uh, stone dust, this, that, everything else.
They have no storage.
They get, they get it out all the time.
What's with lawn furniture, they might be the same.
No. Well, you got, you got your green grass underneath that, that's part of your landscaping, so you could.
So it's separately defined.
Right, the question is, do we need to separately define it? Do we really need to?
Well, we can.
Yeah, the question is, do we continue to need?
I don't know why we need to have a separate one, why garden center typically, many other retailer.
Well, we've gotta make up our minds on, on something, what are we keeping and what aren't we keeping? We're working on Gateway District, and now all of a sudden, we're back to definitions.
Well, then.
With that definition, we've had for a long time.
All right, so it wasn't in either one of these.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So that means.
Should it be included in there?
Yeah.
That's the question.
So, so we have the definition, that, I agree, it should be allowed.
Yeah.
Is it conditional or permitted?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't be a permitted.
Just like any other.
And there's limitations even in the definition for the size, what we're twenty-five-hundred, I think, then it's possible to, that it would be.
Then that's the question I'm asking the board is, we need that distinction.
It's not necessarily a Gateway District decision, it's.
One of the reasons we had that, as I recall now, is because it's a more rural kind of use, and it would, it would fit better in a rural-type area as opposed to a commercial area where, well, the other way around. In a rural area, you wouldn't necessarily want heavy commercial or, you know, manufacturing and all of that, but a garden center would be appropriate.
Like Andy's that way.
I mean, in those circumstances, I see why we do it, yeah, so that, it's basically, it's something where it'd be a non-commercial area.
Right, yeah.
And with limitations on, on what that use really entails.
Well, then, good, then we'll keep that, then we'll put it in.
You couldn't.
No, that's good, that's why I didn't know that. Good call, John.
That's a good call.
Good recollection.
We'll keep that.
So it would be a conditional use then, in this district?
I would say permitted.
Or permitted, permitted, I'm sorry, permitted.
I would say permitted too, because I don't have any standards for garden centers.
All right.
But the big question is, what have we missed?
Well, the taverns, um, that's.
Uh, here's a simple question, Evan, instead of trying to play the crystal ball and match everything, right? You got definition, right? Anything that has a definition is allowed. Since it's, since it doesn't have a definition, it's not allowed, so how are you gonna play with your crystal ball for what's coming? If you have a definition, it's permitted, or, or with conditional use, whatever, I mean.
Well, remember that the construction of language, Jamie, if we, if we don't have a specific definition, Marty, remember what it says, it says, then Webster's prevails. So we can't base it on.
Can you think of how much rain we're gonna have next year? I'm gonna tell us.
What about convenience store?
Well, yeah. Well, that's.
I'm sorry, no, convenience store would be okay, convention center, although you would not, convention center.
You got ten thousand square feet or better, you can turn around, you have the room, you can put buildings in.
Isn't a nice convention center, a nice.
Well, I love the idea of it, I just don't, not seen it down there, because I don't, you know, as I was saying before, the, the amount of land. For a convention setting, that's a, that's an event place, so you need a lot.
Are you going to prohibit it because you don't think it's possible?
Yeah, your crystal ball.
Or do we allow it if somebody sees an opportunity and they wanna take advantage of it?
They can buy more lots, remember?
Well, I guess the question.
You're not gonna get bumping up against the railroad track.
Yeah.
It might be the ideal.
There might be spots, they're gonna, they'll shuttle everything in.
But how much room you got between the road and the railroad track?
But there are lots of people who like trains and railroads.
Could be like the New York Thruway, they have the railroad and the track, but down in Heinz Center in Boston.
I wanna come back to taverns, I think it's an appropriate fit down there.
Yeah.
Part of the definition, and not thinking of any sense of tavern you might already know, but it's an establishment used primarily for the serving of liquor by the drink to the general public, where food or packed liquors may be served or sold only as accessory to, or use it just as a box. It's just a bar.
It's a bar.
It's a bar. You want a bar down there? Because we have the bar all the way up on Route One and all the rest of the place you would want.
Yeah, they can race from one end to the other.
Well, there's a... I can lead the way on it, but I don't know if it does... Wouldn't fit there.
That's the question.
Do we have banquet hall?
Banquet hall?
Well, let's cap it off. Banquet hall.
That would be excluding?
Well, right down there because it's not listed.
It's not listed.
It's a rental institution?
No.
It's a rental.
The tavern, banquet hall.
Convention center, I'd say we ought to put it in. If it doesn't get built, it doesn't get built. Not up to us to say.
I don't think there's anything down there big enough to sustain a sector system that big.
That's another thing.
Sewerage there, I'm sure.
My streetlights, though?
Well, how many... If everybody, if over the next few weeks you think of something, we'll just come back to it next time because we're running short on time. So, this isn't a final list, not voting on it.
Well, remember, we're having our meeting next week.
Right.
We're gonna ask the people in that...
We're gonna hear some new ideas from them.
What looks good? What do you wanna see, what don't you wanna see?
I mean, I'm with John. I think some variety of use there, which I don't have a whole lot of issue with.
I don't either. And I don't wanna limit it. You know, there's certain things that don't seem practical given this... Remember, we're talking about a very small area, we can use small lots.
At one time, we said that that was gonna be very similar to DB one. And if we go to DB one...
We have a huge lot.
But we have a huge... We have a huge... Just real quickly, you know, about catering and food preparation, those kind of things are good. Health clubs. You know?
I'm sorry, Zach.
Recording studios. I don't know, there's a lot of them on there that's... Would be real good for...
Do we have a parking?
Well, if you know how big they are already. You know, you gotta get a... I mean, it sure not gonna... A recording studio sure isn't gonna take a month or two to get to twenty thousand square foot. Church.
Whoa. Super church.
Likes to see that.
Well, it's only in California.
Texas. Mega church.
Yeah, we should be good.
Yeah, that might be...
Let's go back to the moonlight characters. Right down on 111 is...
About four thousand.
Is that all?
Oh, you want to think about four thousand?
What's that? Oh, I thought it was huge.
I think, I was thinking more than ten.
You think it's ten?
Yeah, it's got a hole, it's got a chip connected to it.
Yeah.
It's got that chip.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's big.
We could get a couple.
Well, I think we need to wrap it up.
Okay. All right, so, but it is report. There really hasn't been a lot of activity that's occurred since the last meeting, except to say that we... Looks like we have some folks out who are looking at the county connection lot to develop, to bring some of the business to that. So, there's somebody who's interested in building there.
Same type of business?
Exact same business. Yeah, I think it'd be a nice addition. We have several others that are hanging the wings that are, I'm still waiting for any payment. I have two, just approved, two more private way exemptions and I have one pending. You will, as soon as that one passes, you will be having an application coming for a business expansion. I'm still waiting for two others that I haven't gotten anything in that. The Laurel Lane one, I haven't gotten anything in that. I have no subdivisions on the horizon, but I have a lot of importies in business, so...
On what?
On several businesses that are looking at this town, so...
We're on Route what?
Yeah. Doesn't mean they're going to, but they're just, just to let you know, there's some activity. Very little, as I said, I'm getting no pressure residential subdivision, which I'm kinda surprised at because I think a lot of our inventory is just being consumed right now.
A lot of times, new ones are coming out all the time.
Do you know how many restaurants have been issued?
No, I can find that out for you.
It seems like it keeps going on around town.
We have a lot of renovations, but we do have a lot of new stuff that's going in. We have a new... For those who are asking, and I think Marty was asking and several of you have been asking, what was the deal next to the Lord property? Well, they're putting in the, the Lord boys are putting in that new facility for their fabrication. That is a single-family home. Which is why it never appeared to you guys. That's a single-family home and fillings in association with construction of a single-family home. This person from Massachusetts who decided to build his house there.
Move up to the country.
Move up to the country next to the Lord boys.
And he knows that?
I don't know. I just made the inquiry and I found out, okay. It's a single-family home, that's why they're not in front of you.
But the other thing is, they're building it way deep. And they're right good next to the swamp.
You had said something about a pit called Lane?
Yep, took a lane pass last week.
But what was the issue with that it's gonna be at the end of that lane, there's cross timber frames there? Is it... Is it that far in or...
Well, the exemption was for a lot that was halfway down the road. And that was done this past Wednesday, actually.
Yeah.
And there was another application that's pending that's gonna be submitted for the last law on the middle of the road, that's before a cross. And it will meet the standard because it gets all the qualifications.
Road has to be tarred?
Nope. It's an exemption. Remember, this is the private way exemption that exempts lots on an existing private way in which we've had, which the town has issued, C O's at the end. And that's... Basically achieve what you wanted to achieve. That was to give relief to people on property on private ways that were stuck, would have to be, have to build an entire road in order to build their lots. It's been very successful. And you know what? We've had, I've had two roads that have been rebuilt because of this process.[1640.02]